December 6th meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhaus.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Woodman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Mubi.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. You please join me in a pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you can see from, at least from up here, that we're in very good hands this evening. We are surrounded by Boy Scouts from Troop 46, working on their Eagle merit badge citizenship in the community. So, good luck, guys. I'm very happy to see you. I had two Boys and Scouts and one that did make Eagle, so that's quite an accomplishment. I hope you can do that as well. And I have to say personally, if you ever get out to the West Coast, to the hiking out there, that was the most rewarding thing I ever did. So, have fun. I did more as an adult than I ever did as a kid, but it was worth it to catch up even later. So, welcome this evening. We do have a few resolutions I'd like to read this evening. Unfortunately, this isn't one part of the job that's enjoyable, but it's certainly one point that we want to recognize those that have passed before us. And the first one is an individual that gave an awful lot to our community, Frank Farwell. And Frank Farwell is a former mayor who made an awful lot of accomplishments and had a long family history of individuals that had accomplishments here in Lake Forest. So, I'd like to read this resolution of sympathy. Whereas Francis Farwell II was an valued and highly respected resident of Lake Forest who gave unsparingly of his time and talents for the enrichment of the citizens of the community. And whereas Frank Farwell was elected to the office of Alderman of the Third Ward in the city of Lake Forest from May 1976 to May 1982. And whereas Frank Farwell also served as mayor of the city of Lake Forest from 1984 to 1987. And whereas Frank Farwell was preceded as mayor by three other members of his family: John Farwell from 1871 to 1872, Winston Farwell 1925 to 1928, and Albert D. Farwell, which is Frank's father, from 1931 to 1934. Whereas Frank Farwell among his accomplishments oversaw the restoration of the Lake Forest Beach. He was responsible for acquiring the historic Ragdale property and was instrumental in developing Croya. And whereas Frank Farwell was an active member throughout the Chicagoland area, including serving as trustee at Lake Forest College for 35 years. And whereas the passing of Frank Farwell on November 21st, 2010 has taken from the community a highly regarded citizen, a friend to many, and love father and grandfather, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the city of Lake Forest, is in session on December 6th, 2010, does hereby express its deep regret and sincere sympathy to members of the family of Frank Farwell. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the City Council and copy hereof duly signed by the mayor be presented to the family of Frank Farwell. And again, our sincere sympathy to the family. And I know in the last week, I also received a couple of emails from former mayors who have asked if we could in some way show recognition to Frank for his work on the beach and perhaps name the beach after Frank. And I don't know how we would go about doing that, but I'd bring it out to the public for something to think about and see if that's a possibility.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we will be bringing to you in January the discussion that you had a couple of months ago regarding naming rights. And there's a report and recommendation from the Park and Recreation Board, and so we thought that this would be an appropriate time to talk about that at the same time. So, I don't know if it'll be the first or the second meeting of January.
Right. Thank you, Bob. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, and I'd love to present this to the family if there's anyone here from Frank's family this evening. No? Okay. The next item on the agenda this evening is also a resolution of sympathy for Edward Burns. And I'd like to read this one as well. Whereas Edward F. Burns was a dedicated and faithful employee of the city of Lake Forest for 37 years from September 1st, 1954 through January 31st, 1991. And whereas Edward F. Burns during his employment was fired as a police officer and promoted as sergeant on August 12th, 1966. Upon his retirement from the police department in 1977, he was appointed fire chief on July 15th, 1977. Whereas the passing of Edward F. Burns on Thursday, November 11th, 2010, has taken away a highly regarded family member, employee, and friend, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Lake Forest is in session on December 6th, 2010, does hereby express its deep regret and sincere sympathy to the members of the family of Edward F. Burns. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the City Council and a copy hereof duly signed by the mayor be presented to the family of Edward F. Burns. I'd like the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. If there's anyone from the Burns family here as well? I do have one more this evening. I'd like to read this resolution of appreciation. I believe that our police chief Berger is going to read the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. We're here to recognize Marilyn for her 33 years of service to the city this evening, and I'd like to read the resolution of appreciation. Whereas Marilyn Smith, aka Ma, has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since September 26th, 1977. And during her 33 years of service, Marilyn A. Smith has served as a communications operator and as a police records clerk. And whereas during her career with the city, Marilyn served as an active member of the Employee Activities Committee and is widely known for her scrapbooking and word carving abilities. And whereas Marilyn A. Smith will honorably retire from the city on December 23rd, 2010, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby express its appreciation and gratitude to Marilyn A. Smith for a public service faithfully performed. And be it further resolved that the city clerk be hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Marilyn Smith the 6th day of December 2010.
So moved.
Congratulations, Marilyn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Marilyn.
I think Marilyn would like to say a few things.
Thank you. The city of Lake Forest and I go back a long way, even before 1977. As a child, my father would take us out for a ride on summer evenings, and sometimes we'd stop in Lake Forest, and we'd take a nice walk through the square and have ice cream cones. And as we'd walk, I'd try and see some of the policemen or firemen that might be around the old station, which all of you know now as the South Gate Cafe. Well, little did I know that someday I'd be working with these policemen and firemen here in Lake Forest. And little did I know that someday I would be retiring from here. Working for the city has been a great pleasure, and I've worked for and with many fine, dedicated people over these past 33 years. I'll be taking with me many happy memories. Thank you.
Do have a couple of other items under my comments this evening. One is, I mentioned briefly during the Finance Committee meeting, and that is that the city of Lake Forest, we were proud to announce that we received an award last Thursday evening from the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission. One for, basically for Lake Forest Municipal Services Building, for our incorporating sustainable green stormwater practices, and also for being recognized for our Gold Lead Certification of our building. And I just want to thank Director of Public Works, Tom Natsch, and Public Works Department because really that was their daily work for a number of years to get that building up and running and move all of our services over to the West Side. So, it was nice to receive that recognition, and I believe that plaque is going to hang proudly in the conference room overlooking those wetlands that we restored. So, it was a nice honor to receive, and it's a beautiful facility out there. I do have one other item this evening under my comments, and that is a consideration of an ordinance amending the city code pertaining to the Housing Trust. This is a first reading. The council knows that this, I mentioned this briefly at our last meeting, although Alderman Marsh was absent at that meeting, so I did not bring it forward. But basically, this is a draft and ordinance beginning on page 11. And I know there were also some updates, I believe, that were made recently after this was printed by City Attorney Vic Filippini. Very minor updates, but basically this is a draft of an ordinance which would expand the Housing Trust from, right now, we have two members to seven members. And I think the importance of this is that it would open up the ability to get more people at the table, so to speak, that would be able to work to further the affordable housing issues in the community. But it could bring individuals from different areas, including employers, one possibly from Northwestern Hospital, two from the Conway Business Park. I think there's also the Senior Resource Commission and the Lake Forest College, just to name a few. So, I'd like to open that up for discussion this evening at the council here.
I was very, very pleased to see the changes in the expanding of the committee. I think that there's a lot of improvements in the redo of the ordinance, certainly in form.
I'm not sure why seven seems to be the magic number. Things have been going rather well for a long period of time with the three that we currently have. My concern is that seven, while it might tap into, you know, greater knowledge or wisdom, might also add an unnecessary level of bureaucracy, if you will. I don't think it should be expanded beyond five if we're going to expand it. I think one of the virtues of it as a small organization is that it can move quickly with some streamlining, and seven just seems to possibly slow things down.
Just as an update, we have two members right now. We had one member resign. We have two standing members. One member is a City Council member, which we would actually lose that representation after that individual termed out from the City Council as well. So, we are, in my opinion, short of representation. And again, I think the ability to include representation from a lot of other of these individuals and groups that have expressed interest to be at the table, I think, is helpful for this, for the, actually, just for the progression of the affordable housing projects that we're looking at.
And I, with the increase to seven, it allows other elements of the community to be involved. In this case, as representative towards Senior Resource, instead of having to go every time to discuss, get input, possibly we could have a member from Senior Resource on the board, so we could save a lot of time in the long run, so we're not going up and back. How we could have the input from day one, so we could move forward a lot quicker. So, again, on second thought, investing these additional persons in there might actually save time.
Right. And I know a number of the council members have given me names in the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate that. And I think there are, again, there've been a lot of individuals who have already expressed interest. So, I don't think seven is too big of a board or too unruly. In fact, as we know of most boards and commissions, it's not easy to get seven volunteers to show up for every meeting, period. We're all volunteers, and it's not easy to always have that number of individuals working at anything at one time, so.
Vic, a question. Were this to be seven, what would be the requirement for a quorum? And then what would be the requirement of approval for any decision by the fund?
A quorum would be four. The approval limit would usually be a concurrence of four, although if the council chose to have a higher threshold, it certainly could.
Thanks.
Vic, I had a couple of questions as well. And I, Mayor, first of all, thank you for waiting to have this discussion when I could be here, so I appreciate that very much, as well as my other compliments. I, you know, I certainly think expanding the board is a very good thing. I think, though, expanding the board with people that are advocates of affordable housing is absolutely critical. I don't think the forum for deciding whether or not the city should go forward on affordable housing is at the Housing Trust. That forum is really at the City Council. And City Council is where those discussions ought to be. The Housing Trust is really there to make recommendations to City Council with respect to policy and with respect to, which ultimately are then the City Council's decision. The other purpose of this Housing Trust is really to execute against the plan. And so, to the extent that we're expanding to include people that we've all talked about, like representative of our major employers, representative of our non-for-profits, perhaps a representative from our financial institutions that would help with various financing alternatives as we move forward on projects, I could be very, very supportive of this going forward. It makes a lot of sense. A couple of things, though, that when we originally, and most of you were not on the council at the time, a few of you were, when this original ordinance was drafted, there was a rather, and I'm going to ask Vic to explain, but we looked at benchmarks around the country relative to some of the approval and the mechanisms for approval. And if Vic, one of the things I note here that you've deleted, which was a hotly, you know, discussed item the last time around, was how the review and approval process worked. And that is both, there's an issue of three-quarters vote. In 60 days, what was happening was that the Housing Trust was to come back, make proposals to the City Council, and then they had 60 days to, in fact, act on those, which wasn't taking away authority. It was simply, it was a way of balancing that, and also recognizing that sometimes these issues could have certain, you know, certain opponents and proponents. We recognized at the time we formed it that this was never, affordable housing was never going to be 100% of the community might believe in every single project, just like in every project that we would do, we wouldn't meet 100% of people's given concerns. So, if you could address that point, it's specifically Section 52-7. I have some concerns in where you've come up with, the reason for why you suggested that we change that.
Well, I do my best not to have reasons for what I've suggested. I just offer, I just offer alternatives. But I think that one of the parts of the discussion that had come out over time is what is the role of the Housing Trust vis-à-vis the City Council? And I think one of the things that you'll see consistently throughout the draft is to clarify that the Housing Trust Board is a recommending body and not a body that'll make a final decision. So, it was really in that vein that the change was proposed in this draft, so that all decisions would affirmatively be posited with the City Council rather than a decision by default, which in effect is the way the 60-day period acted previously. And again, that's a suggestion, something that you are.
Yeah, I mean, you've done a great job of explaining it. That was the point I was making as well. And I think it was, just for everyone's benefit, it was a very conscious decision to do that when we formulated the trust. And part of the reason was, the one reason I gave, the other reason was, is that the trust was envisioned over the long term to be an entity not unlike potentially an Open Lands or other entity that would in fact be able to receive funds, could receive property, could receive bequests. And had that been the case, we wanted to have a certain level of independence at the trust, so that it acted really like a land trust and not like a, simply a recommending body, but that it actually could conduct its business on a fiduciary basis going forward. So, those were some of the reasons, and I thought very important reasons, that gave the trust some additional ability to attract donations, private contributions potentially in the future. For example, if somebody, if somebody could, we'd discuss things, like if somebody passed away, they could donate their house to the trust. We could make an investment in that and further the goals of making sure that we had affordable housing in Lake Forest. So, those were the reasons. I would, I still feel that I would be supportive of what the original language was, as opposed to the language which was struck care at this point. Just something for everyone's thought, but that's where I'd come down on that. I mean, unless we've done some research that would suggest that this is a better way to do this. Because we did substantial research at the time. We looked at housing trusts around the country, in Santa Clara County, in Connecticut, and some other places similar to Lake Forest in terms of, you know, areas that were relatively wealthy communities that had set up regional or local land trust to try and move forward with these kinds of goals. And that's what it was really modeled on. So, it was not, wasn't taken out of the air, and it was really done based on best practices. So, if we don't have best practices, I would suggest we kind of leave that in. It's still, I mean, we can highlight that, I think, in any recommendation to City Council and say, look, we're at a point where, you know, we can do, I think we've been reporting to you on affordable housing about every meeting. So, we're, I think we've got the message that it's important to do the communication well ahead of time. It's important to make sure there's no surprises. And I think, given that, this would probably, I think I prefer, that kind of language might make sense.
I think, you know, coming from boards and commissions, I think a decision made at a meeting brought forward as a, you know, to be passed by City Council or any consent agenda, whatever the case is, I think that works quite well. And I think if, I understand the motivation for this, but I think if we step outside for one group, I think it'll be consistently misunderstood by the public. And this is a topic that needs to be understood by the public on a frequent basis, as it affects different areas and different times. I think the size of the group is important as well. I think, I think seven's a decent number. I think the more properly vetted these types of issues, and these will always be controversial, I believe, locations, things like that. I think the more people involved, the more, the more these things get vetted, the easier it is, when it comes to City Council, that we don't have a roomful of people ready to fight, that that, that those compromises and situations have taken, taken place in the committee meetings and things like that, as one would expect them to be. I don't know if, I'm thinking of the boards and commissions I sat on, or the HPC there, and it seems to me that the task of the group is to uphold the ordinance and their interpretation of the ordinance and to move forward with activity from the ordinance. I don't see why it would be treated differently at City Council. I understand the autonomy would obviously allow things to move faster, but I think the speed at which they move is, can be as bad as it can be good. And I'd be worried about that 60 days allowing, allowing things to be properly vetted.
Vic, do you see any problem with the change in language upon the city accepting donations of property or structures or anything? It would still be the same. The city certainly can accept those.
The city certainly has the ability to accept it, and there are a variety of different models. It can all be done in-house with the city. It can also be done through the city assigning that responsibility to certain organizations, not unlike what we have currently with Open Lands as being a body that we have by contract, responsible for the maintenance of some of the lands that the city owns. I think that we maintain our ability to do it under either approach. I think that the points that Alderman Marsh mentioned certainly were part of the consideration because of the, what I'll say, the desire to have a mechanism in place. I think we recognize that there are a variety of mechanisms that can be used. I don't think that we're foreclosed from doing that, but I think that certainly at the outset, that notion of independence was viewed in part as something that might make donations more attractive. And I think we've perceived it that way in other contexts within Lake Forest, with the complementary creation of 501(c)(3)'s to, you know, to work in concert with other activities of the city, such as the Croya Foundation.
Right. But the Housing Trust has never been a housing authority or a 501(c)(3) or anything separate like that, and that would still have the possibility of developing that if we needed that.
Yeah, we, again, we have a number of different approaches we can take. And I think at the time that we did this originally, it was seen that this could be that mechanism. Does it have to be known? But it was set up so that it would have that level of distinction from perhaps just a subordinate body of the city.
Yeah, I might, I might add, there's also provisions, very specific provisions, that the Housing Trust has no authority to spend money without City Council's approval. So, there's no, there's no ability to come up with a project that includes any city funds without the City Council's expressed approval. That's, there's a budget requirement and everything else. So, all the money that is generated by the city that goes into the Housing Trust Fund is all money that stays with the city until City Council specifically allocates it for a given project. So, if in fact there was an allocation necessary, that would have to come to City Council ahead of time.
So, what would these applications be, then, that wouldn't?
But I'd suggest, this, well, I'm, I was trying to give you the background, as I recall it.
No, I understand. But if that's the case, then if anything that requires city funds would have to be voted on by the council, and presumably the majority rules in that situation. So, these would be applications that did not involve any city funds. Those are.
No, it may, I mean, this does not address that. This addresses that, I mean, obviously if it had city funds in it, there would be the provision the city would have, and I don't know where that language is directly, but we had a, we had a budget requirement that anticipates the year in advance activities of the trust and whether, in fact, the trust would obligate any city funds during that course of events. And that, that is a document and a piece of information that would have to be approved ahead of time by City Council.
In response to Alderman Grumhaus's query, the trust was not structured specifically for the purpose of being a repository, but it was structured so that it could be a repository. It wasn't charged specifically with that, but it was, it was enabled to do that. So, and I think it's fair to say that at the outset, we did not have any certainty of how something would come out. So, we tried to, we tried to give it some ability to maneuver in the way that in the way that, you know, that, that opportunities came forward.
I, I guess what I'm struggling with is this says, "All complete applications for housing trust fund award shall be submitted to the housing trust board."
The applications would go to the board. The board would vet them. They would make the recommendation to the council.
Doesn't the application ask for some sort of money or funding?
It may or may not. It doesn't have to.
Okay. But if it does, then that, then that would...
It would ultimately come before the council. Under today's ordinance, it would go first to the board. The board would review and, review it, make a recommendation. That recommendation would be presented to the council. The council will either act affirmatively on it, either in favor or against, or with some modification, or if there is no action, the...
Well, but to act against, you need a three-quarters majority.
To come out with a result different than the recommendation, right?
Right.
Right. And if the, if the council were to take no action, then it would be deemed approved.
Okay.
So that's, that's one of the changes, again, as I mentioned, recognizing what appeared to be a, a concern that this be a more purely recommending body is a result of the, the change that you see presented in this draft for your consideration.
But again, we're only talking about applications where funds are not involved.
See, there's a conflict, I think, in the...
If you look at the language that's in that section, I think the first part of this paragraph does talk about the application, but the last sentence that's there just prior to the strikeout says, "Decision to approve or deny all application for funding." So I think there is a, a mixed message there. You'd almost have to strike that out to be, if you wanted to make sure that the funding request did not require a three-fourths approval of the city council.
Present in 52-9, it talks about, "Housing trust fund is authorized subject to approval by city council." But if those city council approvals subject to, the end of 52-7, then you, I don't know what's going on.
Exactly. No, I mean, I think that's separate, and maybe the language has to be changed in 52-7 to clarify that. But the, I mean, clearly there was a reason for the approval mechanism. I gave you the background on what that was. It would effectively act, provide the housing trust the ability to act a little bit more independently, but not completely, certainly not independently of city council, but it would require city council to affirmatively or, or say yes or no to a project. That's, and that was the idea at the time it was formed. That was the, that was the reason it was there. There was a very specific reason it was there, and, and because the history, I mean, that was, that was based on our due diligence of numerous housing trusts around the country. So that was the reason it was there. And, and I am still in favor of that language. I think it is good language. I think it makes sense, and it still gives city council all the control it needs to have over any activities.
I frankly like the, the recommendation or the, or the new change, the variation of the change that the city attorney has come up with, simply because I think it, as it stands now, it, it's somewhat nebulous again as to what, to what is happening there as far as it's coming back to the city council, and then it needs three-fourths, simple majority vote. That's not how any of the other boards or commissions act, and I, and I do think it would, it could be problematic in the future. And I think that the, the change as it's shown now is much more succinct. It reads very clearly, and it, and it gives a, a very clear direction as to what the, what we're supposed to be doing. So I'm in favor of the, the change that the city attorney has made here.
You know, at the risk of oversimplifying this conversation, I'll go back to that old adage, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." And I'm not sure, nobody's told me yet, what it is that's broken about the housing trust and the process as it is currently constituted. We've gone through a rather lively conversation about a particular program, and the council discussed it at length and made a decision. So we know that the way it has been set up works, and yet here we are trying to modify something. The only thing that I can think of is that there is some concern or fear that the way it currently operates is going to create a problem for the city sometime in the future. But I would rather make decisions on this council based upon reality, not fear. And so I don't know it's broken, and if it isn't, then I don't see a real need to make all these wide-reaching changes.
I think it's the expectation of the developer possibly, realizing the power of the people that he's talking to and not the approval of the council. That could be a reality, and they expend money and, and feel a direction that isn't approved, but has happened. I mean, that's a, that's a reality that, that just happened, so I think...
They spend the city's money.
No, no, I know, but I think it's, it's a, it's a unfortunate that that may have happened, and that may have been offset by the perception of so much authority in one location unusual to the other boards and commissions.
I'd like to make a motion for first reading.
I, I need clarification before we make a motion. Is 52-7 and 52-9 the way it is currently written? Is it outlined what was put in on November 15th, or is that what is currently in the ordinance?
I believe that the language, simple majority, that's in 52-7 in the markup in your packet, I believe that's page...
Does our current, current ordinance have a conflict between what is written and what is in the two, in the two? Because if we just add the blue stuff back, this doesn't make sense, because they can conflict with each other.
The, the blue stuff, as, as you refer to it, the, the language, simple majority is not in the current ordinance. Simple majority, I, I believe, was an interim draft, and that language somehow got, was retained in the, in the markup. Right now, I, I'm nearly certain, if I'm wrong, please correct me, I believe right now the regulations are that, or the ordinances, after, within 60 days after the delivery of such recommendation to the city council, it's deemed approved unless a three-fourths vote of the council members then holding office overturns such recommendation. So the simple majority language is not in the current ordinance. It, it was an interim version of this markup that, that didn't get deleted.
So the current ordinance allows the housing trust to distribute funds without approval of the council?
No, not necessarily.
The, the language, the language is that it is going to be subject to the council's approval, but the threshold for approval is markedly different than what we would typically have for most any other vote, namely, the council is deemed to be approving it unless a three-quarter vote says no.
Right. Let me give you an example. The housing trusts make a recommendation to the city council that $500,000 be awarded to the Philippine Housing Trust or Housing Development Authority.
That would be a good choice.
That would be a good thing. If the council is so inclined to say yes, you just need a simple majority to ratify the recommendation of the housing trust. If the, if the city council feels that the Philippine Development Authority is unworthy of half a million dollars, then it requires three-fourths of the city council to say, "No, we do not agree with the housing trust recommendation, and no, we're not going to give them money."
And is that six or seven votes?
I gotta say, three quarters, going to be seven votes.
But if the original didn't have any of the blue in it, it says in 52-9 that the housing trust is authorized to accept and utilize funds. So they could spend money without approval. Because "subject to approval by city council" was only added recently.
Correct. That language is not in the current ordinance in, in 52-9.
The current ordinance says they can utilize funds.
And the current ordinance allows the housing trust to...
May I, may I point out, there's a distinction in the ordinance between the housing trust fund, that's the, the bucket of money, and the housing trust fund board, which is the entity. If you look at 52-9, we're talking about the bucket of money. We're not talking about the housing trust board. In other words, that bucket of money is authorized to use funds, property, and other resources from other sources, public and private. That's not saying that the board can simply use the money. It's just saying, what can we put in the bucket? If you look at 52-7, that's talking about the board and how they would make recommendations.
Utilize sounds like take out of the bucket to me. That's why I'm asking. Doesn't sound like put into the bucket.
Well, simply put, Victor, the housing trust could decide to spend the money, and if the council didn't agree, there would have to be a minimum of six votes from council...
Seven votes of the council.
Seven votes to keep them from spending the money.
That's correct. Under the current, under the current ordinance, that is the approach.
Okay, so effectively, they could spend unless there was that override.
That's correct.
It strikes me as a real delegation of our power to an advisory board. We do everything else by simple majority here. I mean, we would have to override them, which is just not what, what a board should do as an advisory board.
Again, I think Vic, Vic gave a good explanation. There's a board and there's a fund. The activities of the board are approved by council. The fund was set up to be able to accept additional contributions and donations similar to what open lands is.
But it's also authorized to, to utilize those funds.
I, I think the issue is we're hung up on the, why, why is there a three-fourths in here, when we don't, we're not held to that standard on any other, any other thing that we do.
City council's purview is why the, the housing trust's purview is defined by the ordinance in narrow, and I, I think it's important to have the oversight.
I'd be reluctant to make that change because are we, I think someone said it here earlier, are we opening ourselves up to making that change with all of our boards? It, it doesn't seem logical in my mind.
I'm just giving you the background on why it got set up the way it did.
I'll go back to make a motion for first reading.
Second?
This is a voice vote, please. Motion is to accept the first reading as outlined. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
We have two opposed.
Three opposed.
Three opposed. Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Bob, can I make a, a request that before the next meeting, I get a copy of what the ordinance is today, black, blue lined or black lined with what the proposed, proposed changes are?
We will.
So not from November 15th, but from the original ordinance that's currently in place.
We will make sure that you get that, plus Vic and I were just talking about another tweak that might help clarify that.
Thank you.
It is confusing.
Yeah, I, the, the ordinance was never drafted to begin with to take away the city council's authority. That was not the objective. I gave you the objective, so maybe we need to clarify, and maybe we can come up with some language that, that works here to serve all the objectives we're trying to, to get done here at the end of the day. So, but that certainly, you, the fear that you're expressing was certainly not the one, any intention that anybody has. Nobody wanted to take away city council's approval over what the trust did.
Mr. Mariani asked for a public comment, but could I just make one comment on this? The, in not regard to the ordinance, but just to give you a little more history, the housing trust did set up a land trust, which is a 501(c)(3) which is able to accept donations. And that, that was, as Tom mentioned, part of the ordinance. The purpose of that was so the housing trust could accept gifts, and at the time, it was the thought was that people that are making gifts to the housing trust are more likely to do it to a more somewhat independent board than to the city.
Thank you. Bob? Your comments?
I'm going to move to the...
Jane, I might point out that this evening, when you leave, you have a number of boy scouts who will help you cross the street to get home safely this evening. So we can get you all the way home before you, before it gets too dark and cold out there, although it's probably too late for being cold. Two items that are not on the published agenda, I just wanted to mention. Number one, as the council knows, we've, over a period of time, have received a few phone calls about the status of the mobile station on Illinois Road, as well as the status of the BP station out on Waukegan Road, and what are we doing about it? And as the council knows, we're somewhat limited under our current codes as to what we can do. The director of community development, Kathy Cerniak, and I have had some recent conversations, and right now, the Historic Preservation Commission is having conversations and dialogue about the, an ordinance which is demolition by neglect, where a property owner just lets the property go to the point where it's not salvageable, and then they come in and they ask for a demolition ordinance. Not that this is exactly the same, and in one case, the BP, or I'm sorry, the mobile station is within a historic district, obviously the BP station is not, but we thought unless the city council has some strong feelings otherwise, that we might ask the HPC as they embark on this conversation, this dialogue, to sort of consider this as well and to see what are some of the best practices that are out there, and are there other things that the city can do to wrestle with this problem? Because unfortunately, I think with this economy, we're going to have this problem for a period of time, and there is nothing right now in our books that, we've tried to explain this to a number of residents, that can force us to go out there and say, "Okay, the owner of the property, the mobile station, you have to do this with this property, and the owners of the BP station, you have to do that with that property." And so unless we hear otherwise, we'll encourage the HPC to also consider those sites and those issues as well in their, in their deliberations. So the next item is something that I'm very pleased to report to the city council because you've been living this as long as I've been living this, and this dates back, let me see if I can zoom in without really, here we go. I'll move this down so we can get it a little bigger so people in the room can actually read it. As I think the council has seen in the newspaper recently, that after a long battle and lots of discussions over the years, the Illinois Legislature did approve some modifications through Senate Bill 3538 to pensions for police and firemen. Now, this bill is sitting on the governor's desk, and we have our fingers crossed that the governor will indeed sign this bill, considering that it was overwhelmingly passed by both the House and the Senate. But it makes some rather significant, but yet initial steps to try and correct some of the sustainability issues of the pension systems in the state of Illinois. You will see that a lot of the components of this bill are similar to what was in the Senate Bill 1946 that was previously passed in 2010 by the Illinois Legislature that affected 13 of the other pension funds in the state of Illinois, but did not address the police and fire pensions within the state. And this bill basically does that and would be, would have pertained to any new policeman or fireman that are hired effective January 1 of 2011. And I apologize, I'm going to have to go back here, because, let me see if I can make this a little, not everybody else in the room is, but maybe it's the focus is. Is that better or worse? Maybe I might have to ask Karina of that. Is that better? The normal retirement age for a new policeman or a fireman would go from age 50, its current age, up to age 55, that they would be able to retire prior to age 55, but that there would be a penalty of 6% a year for each month, or a half a percent each month, or 6% a year for every year prior to age 55 that they retired. One of the big things, and, and I will shortly ask Representative Karen May, who's in the audience, and really did tremendous work on our behalf to try and shepherd this bill through the Illinois House, but one of the things that I think the council and many members of the public are aware of is this pension spiking issue. And the, the third bullet there requires that the determination for final salary is really eight of the last 10 years of salary. Currently, right now, it's whatever their salary is the last day they work or they walk out the door. That is how it's determined, and rather than averaging that over a period of eight of the last 10 years. There was some additional COLA components that were added in there that are currently not in the law as they relate to future adjustments, either COLA or the, or half percent of CPI, whichever is there. There's also, you see a pension salary... There's also, you'll see a pension salary cap of a hundred and six thousand, eight hundred dollars, which is identical to what is in place now for all other of the state pension funds that are in there. Surviving spouse benefits currently is at a hundred percent, would drop back to sixty-six and two-thirds, which is where it was in the early two thousands. It also includes some additional, I'm sorry, actuarial changes, that this is probably where the most immediate impact is gonna be felt by communities across the state. Currently, there is this closed amortization period where communities have to be a hundred percent funded by the year twenty thirty-three. This would now allow that goal to move to twenty forty, twenty forty-one, and with a ninety percent funding. And so as the actuarial adjusts, they're going to see an immediate savings to communities across the state, in terms of what they have to put into the levies in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and so forth. The, the other thing that was very relevant in light of the, the volatile economy that we have there is under actuarial changes, bullet point number three, that allows a five-year smoothing of actuarial gains and losses incurred after two thousand and eleven. And council knows that, I think it was our budget last year, we saw a big hit in terms of our pension requirement, because of the investment losses that were realized by the police and fire pension funds. There is some new compliance language in there. I'm happy to report this does not really apply to the city of Lake Forest, but there are communities in the state of Illinois that unfortunately, even after they get their actuarial report that says, here's how much you must put into your pension fund, they do not fund it based on what is required under state law. And this says, it's starting in two thousand and fifteen, if a community is supposed to be putting a million dollars into their pension fund and only puts in five hundred thousand dollars, that the first year, the state is entitled to go in and take one-third of the state share of their revenues. This would be income tax, sales tax, revenue, and so forth, to make up any difference to where they're supposed to be. In the second year, if they do it, it's then two-thirds, and in the third year, it would be a hundred percent of whatever the funding requirement is. One item that I know the council's gonna be very pleased, because we were talking about this four or five years ago, when we first started addressing the issue of pension, of pension funding, was the, the increased investment authority. And that language is included in there. It just took them about three and a half years to come to their census and realize that we knew what we were talking about. It's unfortunate that we didn't have it during two thousand and ten, when we had some of the ramp up, but basically what this does is it allows any fund with over ten million dollars in assets, which Lake Forest falls into, to have greater investment opportunities in the equity markets than they do right now. And finally, it also includes some language in there about the Commission on Government Forecasting and Accountability doing two studies, one on investment pooling. And again, the, the intent here is, is to look at comprehensive, large investment pool that local pension funds would be able to invest in, to get better rates of return. When you take a look at the rates of return that like an IMRF fund gets versus what these local, smaller pension funds gets, you know, there are a couple of percentage points difference, and that's make, it means a lot of money over a period of time. And then also, taking a look at all of the pension funds, there are six hundred and thirty-four independent police and fire pension funds in the state of Illinois, looking at them and what's caused them to be in various positions that they are, whether it's unfunding, whether it's benefit enhancements, whatever the case might be, is to taking a look at what is causing some of their problems, and then that will give us a better roadmap in terms of how we can make further enhancements going forward. I think that in the, in the words of Representative Kevin McCarthy, who is the chief sponsor in the House of the bill, this is not a panacea, but it certainly is a very important first step in making some changes and trying to bring the whole pension funds under control, because this, this in and of itself is not gonna correct the problem. We're also gonna have issues as we go forward, but it is a very important first step. And we're very pleased that, again, through the leadership of Representative May and, and others in the Senate, that we were able to get this out with rather significant votes, I think it was ninety-five to eighteen in the House, and I think it was forty-five to four, I think, in the Senate. So they were overwhelmingly in favor of the, the proposed legislation that is currently on the governor's desk. With that, let me pause and, and ask Representative May if she wanted to come up and, and add anything or say anything, 'cause she can give you better insights than I can. The only other thing I will say, having spent a number of days in the last six months down there, I'm just glad I'm in Lake Forest.
Thank you. And, and I would like to compliment the city manager, Bob Kiley, on his leadership and his diligence on this issue, because not only did he bring the issue to us three years ago, I think the bill about investment authority I introduced was three years ago, and then two years ago was some smoothing that we could do, too. And at the very beginning, leadership said, well, we're only hearing from some of the communities in your area, Karen, you know, we're not hearing from the whole state. And that led Bob to take leadership with the Northwest Municipal Conference and the Illinois Municipal League to make it more of a statewide issue. So I am pleased that we were able to get something forward, a very good first step, something that will help the communities, not only in this area, but in many areas of the state. I, I am a brand-new member of the Pension Committee, but served on the subcommittee. And while we tried to do this last year, when we did our general pension reform, the public safety, police and fire pensions were pulled out at the last minute. It was being negotiated in the Senate, and they just couldn't come to an agreement. It blew up at the very end. So our goal this year, with the subcommittee in the House, was to find something we could pass. And it really took a lot of balancing, meeting with leaders and meeting with all sides, while Representative Kevin McCarthy did carry most of the water. Representative Elaine Nekretz and I were on the subcommittee. So we had special hearings, and we met with leadership in both sides, and each time someone would want something a little bit more, he would bounce it off of us. And I am pleased that we were able to get something done, something that I believe will give you flexibility and some relief to, A, get to sustainability in the long run, which is our goal, but also relief so that there, you probably don't have to raise property taxes to meet some of the immediate losses in the market and other pressures that you face. So basically, it was what we could pass, it is a good first step. We did not touch existing pensions because of the constitutionality. I know that's probably, you know, on everyone's mind. And it's a general feeling in the State House that because our constitution guarantees that you can't reduce benefits, and I've had discussions with Corporation Council here also, because you can't reduce benefits, if we tried doing something like this for existing employees, it would be a five-year court battle and a lot of money for the state, and that doesn't give the relief that our municipalities need right now. So I'll be happy to answer any questions as well, if you have any thoughts.
I have a question on what new hires means. As I understand it, anyone who's in the pension system now can never be a new hire. If somebody works in Chicago, and they leave their job in Chicago and come here and we hire them, they're not a new hire for purpose of this. They're still under the old pension. Is that correct?
I think so, although I don't know if we.
I'm gonna ask, go, go ahead. I'm gonna actually turn to Mr. Filippini, because certainly, if they are incorporated within, like IMRF, that if you move around, you're still within the IMRF system. I think the question on police and fire is, these are separate, independent pension funds, and so if I move from the Chicago Police Pension Fund to the Lake Forest Police Pension Fund, what does that mean, Vic, in terms of a new hire? It will depend on the language, which I haven't had a chance to review, but under the current pension system, even if, as Alderman Palmer says, because you're able to essentially transfer your rights from the one to the other through a certain buy-in option that's available under the current statute. Whether that has been specifically addressed or not in new legislation, I, I haven't looked that closely at this point.
But from my point of view, this particular bill was designed to give sustainability and relief to our municipalities. It doesn't really take on the overall statewide pension issue, which was addressed last year, and we have more uniformity in all of the pensions, not just local police and fire. Your, our neighbor Bannockburn, I know, I believe, and your Corporation Council can tell you, they are in a different system. They're a smaller town, they're under five thousand, so they go in IMRF instead of the police and fire. And I believe that is considered a separate fund, but rely on your Corporation Council for that.
Bob, have we crunched any numbers to know, if I understood your presentation, how the extension of the, call it the contribution period, plays out as far as Lake Forest is concerned and its obligations? I think you said from twenty thirty-three to twenty forty or something. What is, what, how do those translate into actual numbers for us, if you know?
We're, we're running them right now. I don't think we've seen any results. It's a complicated.
I'm sure.
Equation, but it will be meaningful.
Okay.
What we've, a sort of a separate question is, that we're also having run, is that someone coming in under this new system, or what we call the new tier-two system versus tier-one, I think can be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-two percent difference in terms of total pension costs. But in terms of what did this do to ours right away, I think we're gonna find, and they're running the numbers, it's gonna be somewhere between five and ten percent.
Okay, 'cause that will be relief for current participants, I guess.
When will this be effective, assuming the governor goes ahead and signs it this month?
January one.
Is it Jan. one, so it's parallel to the other, the other changes?
Yes, and that was one of the things that Representative McCarthy was trying to work so hard on, is to make sure that this got in place, so everybody was consistent, January one, twenty eleven.
Is it legal to discriminate, if that's the case, to be able to hire someone, say we're not gonna hire him because he's got a cost mode, because he's a?
It's never legal to discriminate.
No, there's protected groups, no, really, I mean, it's a criteria.
I'd say that's a good answer.
Discrimination's not legal.
The city manager plays lawyer very well.
Can you say you can't work here because you're in the fund already?
We, we have, the current funding, or I'm sorry, the current hiring approach is one that's already set out in detail, both in the statute and in our local regulations, as far as the process for being hired. The, the cost of the employee is not one of the criteria that is specifically identified in that.
You can make financial decisions, and that's not a non-discriminatory basis, generally. You can't couple it with, for example, age and say, we're gonna get the benefit like that. But strictly, a financial decision is generally a non-discriminatory basis.
And actually, I should add, with respect to police and fire, age is a bona fide occupational qualification, so after age, I think it's thirty-five for initial hires, and I think it's a slightly ramped-up number for transfers, age can be considered.
Bob, you mentioned, and Representative May mentioned as well, that it's a great first step, and I think we'd all agree. Given you can't touch existing pensions, what's the next step? Where do you go from here?
Well, I am working on a bill for January to, to deal with some of the spiking and all in IMRF. And as I look at the overall pension issue, while we didn't want to jeopardize what we felt was necessary to help our municipalities at this point, I think that we need to draft a bill to test the constitutionality of some of these things, too, and to do it separately. Some of the things that I'm looking at, there are a couple other tweaks in IMRF on anti-spiking and other things, but I want to keep them separate on something that would become the constitutional test bill. And I know I've had conversations with other attorneys, as well as Mr. Filippini. He wasn't charging you for the time when he talked to me about it, he assured me. But we're, we're looking at different ways to deal with it, because it will be a long and costly battle. So I think that we ought to develop one bill that's sort of a test for that. That's my personal thought on it.
Thank you.
And I would just say that I, I think you can all be proud of the leadership that Bob Kiley did, did give his expertise. Certainly, I relied on it, Representative McCarthy and others relied on it, and things can, with so many parts at a higher level of government, things, when it's as sensitive as this, can blow up at any time, and the fact that we got it done by the end of the year, I, I think is, is good. And Bob, now you can keep sure that the salt, make sure the salt trucks are moving, and the snowplows are running, and everything is good and well in Lake Forest. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. We thank you for all your efforts, and certainly want to thank your counterpart, too, Susan Garrett, for her efforts as well. And Bob, it is glad to have you back here in Lake Forest. I know you're probably much happier here than down in Springfield as well.
It is nice to be home. I will also point out for the record, I think there were a total of forty-four community referendums throughout the state of Illinois on pension reform, and Lake Forest had the highest yes vote, so we have that distinction. But that played a huge role in sending a strong message that this wasn't just a Northshore issue, that this was affecting communities across the state. And that really is what ended up selling it, is having the mayor of Rockford, and Moline, and, and St. Charles, and so forth down there, also saying the exact same thing, that we need relief, we need help. So thank you for, for taking the leadership. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that completes my report.
Thanks for your leadership on that, Bob. I know you've worked hard on that.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is council committee reports, the first being the finance committee report. Alderman Grumhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a finance committee meeting earlier this evening, the last year. We spent most of the time talking about the capital equipment budget. In addition, we have two items on the agenda that we need approval on. Both of these were discussed at both the finance committee meeting in November, as well as at the city, last city council meeting. The first is consideration of an ordinance established in the tax levy for two thousand and ten. The annual tax levy must be filed with the county clerk before the last Tuesday in December. The proposed tax levy for two thousand and ten reflects a two-point-nine-one percent increase over the two thousand and nine tax levy extensions for the city and library operating funds and city pension and debt service funds. So unless there are questions, I will take a motion to grant final approval.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Nobit?
Aye.
Alderman Woodman?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Yes.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Louie?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
A D A's known names, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is the ordinance abating the two thousand and ten tax levies for various general obligation, alternate revenue bond issues. These ordinance provide for the abatement of the two thousand and ten taxes levied for the various outstanding general obligation, alternative revenue bond issues. This ordinance also must be approved by the December twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten. Again, we discussed this extensively last month.
I'll make a motion to grant final approval.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Nobit?
Aye.
Alderman Woodman?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Louie?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
A D A's known names, motion carries.
And that does it for finance.
Thank you, Alderman Grumhouse. Our next item on the agenda is the housing trust. Alderman Morse?
I'll try and be brief, Mr. Mayor. Four or five things that I wanted to report back to city council on, that you gave us direction to give you an update on these by the end of the year. The first of which is, we had a workshop last Thursday, attended by five members of the planning commission and five members of the Senior Resource Commission, as well as members of the public, to talk about various affordable housing sites or potential sites, and, and what kind of considerations that we should look at at those sites. I think it was a, a good dialogue, and we're continuing to take input. We're hearing, obviously, on all sides of these issues, but a good dialogue, a good open forum at Gorton. On Friday, there's a couple activities with the, both the Metropolitan Planning Council convened a meeting with some of the employers in the region to talk about affordable housing. Kathy Cerniak was able to attend that meeting on behalf of the city, and will be reporting back to the next housing trust board meeting. In addition, we're going to meet with Rob Anthony, who is head of the community land trust, and some local bankers, to talk about the financing ideas we may have for single-family homes. I know that's a topic that you asked that I come back here with. So we're gonna have some discussions about how we might finance the purchase of some single-family homes. We've heard a lot about foreclosure, so we'll try and come back to you with more details about the feasibility of doing that, and what the economics might look like. We're planning another follow-on meeting. This was another action item with the Senior Resource Committee and Presbyterian Homes to talk about the. and Presbyterian Homes, to talk about the Neighborhood Without Walls program. We'll come back to you as well with that, on, on follow-up on that. That's something that Senior Resources has been very anxious about. And then the final thing that you asked us to do is to forward our recommendations to the Plan Commission relative to the Affordable Housing Ordinance update. So that's going to be done, and I believe that'll be on their agenda in January. So, that's the update for the Housing Trust.
Very good. The next was...
Oh, one other, one other thing that we're going to do, and certainly opened to any other members, is we're going to do a tour of some affordable housing sites. Not sites, but some other projects that have been completed, one in Highland Park, and perhaps some others. And this was at the request of the Plan Commission. They wanted to actually take a look at what some of these projects look like. So, we're going to be doing that as well.
Thank you. You're also, the next item is the Laurel and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee.
I'll try to make that faster.
Can we get invited to that tour?
Yes, yes. That's why I mentioned it. You're invited.
Of course you are.
First of all, in the Laurel and Western Redevelopment Committee, we've been doing some work. We took out all the underground fuel tanks. We took away the oil separators and the hydraulic lifts. So, that's all been removed from the site. There was some contaminated soil associated with that. That's been removed, and new fill has been put in. So we're making progress in that regard. We have some next steps. We're going to have a, I think Kathy suggested, we have a committee meeting, of which Alderman Schoenhyder is also on the committee in January, to talk about next steps, where else there's some additional maybe contamination that we need to deal with. In addition to that, I've gotten a lot of comments about the eyesore nature of some of the, this site. I don't know if you've heard of it, but I, I think we need to kind of, since the construction is done, it's time to clean up the mess a little bit. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Your next item is the Legal Committee. Alderman Palmer?
No report.
Thank you. The next one is Senior Resource Commission. Alderman Novit?
Quick report. Next meeting's a week from today, on Monday, the 13th. Affordable housing has dominated the agenda for Senior Resource for the last few months. But obviously, at this point, as Tam reflected, the rental assistance Neighborhood Without Walls program have been in the forefront of discussions. Also in discussion has been budget, and acquisition of another bus for the Senior Resource Center. But next meeting is Monday at 8:00 AM, for all interested. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Our next item is Public Works Committee. Alderman Louie?
Public Works is very quick, in that the lighting is almost finished on Waukegan Road in the Westlake Forest area. We'll be happy to see all the lanes open all day long. The school buses out there, it'll be a big improvement with the lighting. As well as, we went through our first snowstorm. Fortunately, it wasn't too large, but it was a nice amount to get a good practice, and it seems like everything went very well in town. So we were happy with the results on that. And as you heard, in looking for new equipment, that we're waiting for some new snowplows to come in.
Thank you, Alderman Louie. Next item is Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee. Just briefly, we did not meet this month. And the main topic, I guess, ongoing is we're still working on the train shelters over at the Telegraph Road Station. And Karina, those are ongoing, and we're looking at another month or so?
January 18, they should be delivered, and then hopefully they'll be assembled by the end of January.
Good. Well, the cold weather's here, so it'd be great to get them up and going, and I appreciate your, your efforts in that regard. That concludes the committee reports. Next item is comments by council members. Any additional comments at all? Hearing none, we'll go on to opportunity for public to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Anyone from the public?
It is cold out late, but I've got a couple of things on my mind. One, I'm looking here now, and I wonder how many people here, other than staff, are at the meeting? Residents of Lake Forest?
They're raising their hands.
Okay. Anybody? We've got three of us.
There are people on television.
There's 22,000 people in this town.
We had 40 Boy Scouts here.
Pardon?
We had 40 Boy Scouts here a minute ago.
Yeah, they left you, didn't they?
I know, they just, it's past their meeting time.
Yeah, well, it's past our bedtime, too. But what I'm trying, I'm going to make a recommendation. Years ago, the, the council meetings were on Saturday morning. Okay? This, this room was filled, always. Every Saturday morning where there was a council meeting, it was full. You've got nobody here now.
They're at home, watching. This is the, this is the biggest thing on TV.
But they don't get a chance to say anything. Can't talk when you're at home. I've got a couple of things that are, are on my mind. One is about the Housing Committee that says they had a survey out. Well, I talked to a lot of people, and nobody got a survey. Now, you people are here representing us. Is that the way it is? Am I correct? You're representing the citizens. Okay. Most of the time, the citizens don't find out about anything that's happening until after it's done. Now, if they don't watch television, maybe they'll never know. But I'm, my, my point is that if, if we're going to spend the money for the people who are going to be living here and paying for this, send out a survey and see if they want this. That's my feeling. Now I'm going to go to the, the housing for the college and stuff like that. They've got housing down, faculty housing at the college that is now being filled by students. Now, I don't know why, but that's what's happening. Maybe the, the faculty doesn't want to live in Lake Forest anymore. I don't know. There should be a survey about that, too. I don't know. The hospital, they've got more land than Lake Forest does. Let them build some for housing out there. I don't think, I don't think we should be landlords. And if you're going down to Highland Park to check affordable housing, go over on Oak Street. My brother lives on Fort Sheridan Avenue. Take a look. I think you'll be disappointed. I, I think that's all I have. And then I heard a lot about buckets being filled. Keep them long enough, they leak.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Walt Nielsen, 23 or four-year resident of the city. Earlier today, as most of you, I suspect, know, I sent an email to you setting forth a whole series of violations of the Open Meetings Act by the Housing Trust Board. I would like to know, give some indication of whether or not there's going to be an official response to those, to that information.
I have not had a chance to review it, but I think we will definitely give it to the city attorney, and have him take a look at it, and come up with a response, if appropriate.
A second, a quick question, your, your honor. When are we, is the final version that you passed first reading on tonight going to be available to the public? I noted today that there was no agenda for this meeting posted online, nor were there any documents that, you know, even came close to a first reading document posted online. So is the public, once again, going to hear that, see this one after it's done, or do we get a chance to look at it in advance?
Well, we, we voted a first reading, so the second, the fourth, the final approval of that should come up at the next...
It'll be on the January 3 meeting. And after, we did get your email, and we can talk about this after the meeting if you want. I'm not sure where you looked, but according to staff, it noted that it was posted Thursday afternoon. That's what our records show, that the agenda and the backup material...
The agenda for this meeting?
Was last Thursday afternoon.
It was not on the website.
It, well, when the staff looked at it this morning, at 11:05 after I got your email, they found it on the website. So I think we'll talk about where it was.
Willing to do that.
Okay.
Then I'd like to make a comment about Alderman Marsh's desires to repack the Housing Trust Board. It was packed to begin with by only proponents. If you're going to pack it again, not only with litmus-tested proponents, but with actual potential beneficiaries, like members of the college, or the, or the hospital, you will do nothing for the credibility of those efforts. And I also would comment to say, in that same regard, that having to pack it means that it can't withstand serious criticism.
Mr. Nielsen?
Excuse me, sir. We get a lot of emails and letters, and, so I may be wrong here, but the one we just got from you is not the first one you've sent. Is that correct? I kind of recall getting some other communications from you.
I said one in September.
And the one you sent in September is, I just want to sort of benchmark this. Are you the gentleman that referred to affordable housing as some version of income redistribution?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I also refer to it from the perspective of those who pay, which is subsidized housing.
Thank you for your comments. Any other individuals from the opportunity for the public to address the council? Yes, sir.
If I could read my writing here. Skip Thompson on Arcady Drive. First of all, I would congratulate the council on this change in ordinance. I don't think most of us really understood it, but I think everybody's comment, I know there was some opposition by Alderman Marsh, and one other person, I didn't catch who it was, but having a supermajority, I think that you guys did the right thing. You know, all councils and all advisory boards should probably operate on the same MO, in what it is and what it is. So I congratulate you on that. I, I agree with Mr. Nielsen. I don't think that we're doing ourselves any favor by loading the Housing Trust Board without maybe a little bit of controversy. And one of you brought it up. Why not vet more of this stuff at the level of the Housing Trust? We don't have somebody come to the board with a housing proposal in the historic district that it doesn't get vetted through the Historical Commission, the Architectural Review Board, and eventually, any other places it needs to be, zoning variances. And we work all those things out through those boards. So I think that there's probably, and maybe I'm misunderstanding some of the missions of the Housing Trust, but I think some of those things should get vetted. And I think that this room, and you folks who get all the big bucks up there, won't have to take a lot of the heat that, you know, you're taking on some of these issues, whether it's this issue or anything else. And we can all agree to disagree. But I think the further we can move it further down the, the chain of commerce, if you will, and think through other ideas, the better off we are. And finally, I would congratulate all of you, Alderman Grumhouse, the Financial Committee. I, as we all do, are out and about in the community more in the month of December, and we're hearing about all these horror stories in other communities. Their tax is a little goofy. We've heard about the, oh, Park District Boards, many other things that are happening. And, and I hear people headed this weekend, two people telling me they moved to Lake Forest because they were tired of the taxes in another community. And I was pretty shocked at where they were moving from, because I consider our community better than both of the two. And they have a much better quality of life, and in terms of their tax bill, a better dollar for their, a better, you know, you know what I'm saying. Just a better place to be. And you are all to be congratulated for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I do want to clarify one thing on the vetting. The City Council has unanimously voted in support of affordable housing. And I think in that context, when Alderman Marsh was speaking about, as you put it, packing, we're looking for constructive progress in affordable housing. The specifics of where it goes, and which building goes there, and how it gets done, I think that's, speaking personally, that's what I talk about when I talk about vetting. I don't personally talk about vetting the merits of affordable housing, because I think we've all voted unanimously, this is an important part of what we've done, and we have an ordinance. So I'm, I'm, in my discussions, I'm, I'm taking that for granted. I didn't want to make any mistake about that. It's a, I'm not, my vetting is not vetting the concept of affordable housing.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. You just made my point.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
And much more eloquently. I just wanted to point out that this is established policy of the city, and that in September 2006, the city did, in fact, establish the Housing Trust for the purpose of, and I'll read the statement, "Whereas in furtherance of the city's affordable housing plan, and consistent with, with provisions in the inclusionary housing ordinance and demolition tax ordinance, the mayor and the city council have determined that it is in the best interests of the city and its residents to amend the city code to adopt this Housing Trust Fund ordinance to provide financial resources to address the affordable housing needs of the residents of the city by promoting, preserving, and producing long-term affordable housing, providing housing-related services, and providing support for the not-for-profit organizations that actively address the affordable housing needs of the households in the community." This is established law within the city of Lake Forest, and I do urge, as it does seem to be the sense of the council, that the Housing Trust not be packed with people who support housing, but who do legitimately support the mission as the city has defined, which is in support of affordable housing. Thank you.
Just, just for the record, your name and address?
Beth Martin, 1379 Western.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Any other individuals from the public? No, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There are six items on the consent agenda this evening. I might suggest that we take the first three real quick, because they're more easily understood, and then the next three, if you wish to go through them. But that's just my suggestion, but any other thoughts in that regard? Do you want me to just take...
I'd take the first four. I didn't have any issues on the floor.
If you want to take the first six, go right ahead. There's no, no, it's up to you.
Let's do the six, yeah.
Unless somebody has an objection. Unless somebody has an objection.
Do you have any other questions? Go ahead. We'll entertain any motions that you may wish to bring forward.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, these are roll call votes. Catherine, do you have to go through each one, or do them all? Okay.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Nobit? Aye.
Alderman Woodman? Aye.
Alderman Moore? Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer? Aye. AKA's known names, motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is ordinances, and the first one being a consideration of ordinance amending section 40-2-1200 of chapter 40, traffic of the city code of Lake Forest 1971, revising the schedule, speed limit on Western Avenue, lowering it to 25 miles an hour. We did have a discussion of this earlier at the finance committee. Our assistant city engineer, Miss Kana Partey, came up and spoke to that. Are there any other questions now?
Motion to waive first reading?
Second.
That's a...
Voice.
Voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, and if you wish to do the...
Motion to grant final approval?
Second.
That's a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Nobit? Aye.
Alderman Woodman? Aye.
Alderman Moore? Aye. Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer? Aye. AKA's known names, motion carries.
Thank you, Catherine. The next item is new business. I think additional items for council discussion. Hearing none, a lot of motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn one minute after nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
You.